Executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were: Joe Bonora, Joe Rico, Carlos Lopez, Karen Greco, Ethan King, Wes Downs, Kim Lopez, Audrey Garrett.
Mike Valentine.
Sarah Margaret.
For the record, any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matter is not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meeting law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next agenda item is item three, which is policy items and staff reports, space create Trinidad partnership and final closing documents.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Chair Marshall, the Development Services Director, I'm here this evening with Andrew Michelson from Art Space. We'd like to visit with you about final closing documents and the ownership structure. We have quite a few items that were on the agenda this evening related to the ownership structure. We've been operating for the past year with the idea that the city would join in a general partnership with Art Space to own the entire project. As we were preparing final legal review for the documents that are in your packet, it came to our attention Colorado has a little bit of a different caveat on municipal corporations being part of corporate business entities. It's actually prohibited by the Colorado Constitution. So we're going to talk and bring forward a new ownership structure that allows us to recognize the city's continued participation in ownership eventually in the project. So what we're going to ask you to do is table the resolution that is under nine D and we're going to ask you to table the operating agreement under nine E and we're going to continue to pursue the legal option. Mr. Michelson is going to come forward and talk about what that might look like as we go forward. So it's not changing the general principle behind what we intended with the project. It's just how we get there. So we're going to talk about a different way to get there and hopefully be able to bring that back to our goal is October 2nd. If not, it'll be the second meeting in October. So do you have any questions for me over what that restriction would be? It's not something they've seen in other states, so this is particular to the Colorado Constitution. Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll be back again. So as Tara mentioned, as we were preparing for closing documents, getting all of our ducks in a row, discovering whether ducks was not in a row, and we are pivoting. And I want to just talk through what we think will still be achievable and as Tara said, the general intent of delivering the forty minutes of housing as well as the 2,000 square feet of city operated facility space, that does not change at all. What we had previously intended was to admit the city as a partner of ours within the general partnership, which would give you that ownership, that long-term equity stake, which we know is important to recognizing the significant contributions, financial and otherwise, that the city is making into this project. But because of our tax credit financing structure, we can't outrightly convey to you that kind of meaning which will have the city facility in it. So what we are proposing, and as Tara mentioned, we'll confirm with legal as well as with DOLA, who's a primary governmental funder on that portion of the project, is a master lease with an option to convey outright that kind of meaning to the city after a five-year window. The historic tax credits reason for the overall project prohibit any transfer, otherwise we would just frankly sell the building to you as soon as we're completed, just the federal regulations don't allow that. So what we hope to come back, as Tara said, in a couple of weeks' time is with a resolution that will lay that out. We'd always contemplated a master lease to the city, which will give you that effective ownership for operation of that facility, it would be yours. Hopefully now just with the conveyance kind of played it directly back to you to own it outright. So we're going to get that in order and bring that back and certainly be in conversation if there's anything different from that. But ultimately, it should arrive at what we've always contemplated as far as the housing and the community of your states and ours on the next day. So I don't have all the answers tonight, but I'm certainly happy to entertain your questions about what we know as of today. It will bring back more information as we work with council members.
Any questions? Item four, petitions or communications, we're all written. Do we have anybody? Item five, consent agenda approval. Item five A, approval of regular meeting minutes of September 4th, 2018, and special meeting minutes of September 6th, 2018. Item B, approval of special event permit and all numerous and spiritual application filed by Kawani's Club of Trinidad, Colorado for two oh six North Avenue Street on September the 22nd, 2018, the Pink Pop Wall. Do we have somebody here?
Yes, sir.
Item C, approval of major subdivision extension for Trinidad Cultivation Services. Item D, approval of minor subdivision application filed by Art Space Trinidad GP LLC for the property located on 200-228 West Main Street for the purpose of developing the space to create project. Item E, authorization for the mayor's signature, electronic signature be affixed to the Amtrak Communities Petition Sign-on Form. Item F, authorization for the mayor to sign the letter regarding Amtrak services to Richard Anderson, CEO of National Railroad Passenger Corporation and copies to other parties. Item G, approval of the bills. And IMH, approval of the payroll, September 8th, 2018 through September 21st, 2018. Put out a motion, please. I move that we turn to conservative agenda. Second?
I second.
All vote, please.
Benado.
No discussion. Should be. Because if we have a discussion, then we have to move it off.
I agree with all of them except stick C. I vote yes on all of them except stick C.
Greco?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mateh?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Beyond two-five, I, which word is the change?
Seven.
Yeah. It's B seven now.
B seven? B six I. B six I.
Oh, I'm sorry, six I.
B six I. Actually, not even six I, it's five I. Oh, that's right, yeah.
Okay. Which would it will be? Item G, F.
Nine G.
Nine G, council member objection to designating acting mayor on September 10th, 2018. There was just an incident on that day where both myself and Mayor Pro Tem were out of town and I had called and asked Councilman Mateh to chair the meeting, to chair the work session. So evidently it did raise some concern by Mr. Benado. Mr. Benado, would you state your opinion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd just like to say that some people come up to me and ask me what my problem was with the mayor. I don't have no problem with the mayor, but before I start, I'd like to hand these copies out to each council member and to Mr. Sun and Mr. Downs and DeWadra. Can I continue?
Please.
I'm going to read this because I didn't want to leave nothing out, so it just says, "Mr. Mayor, fellow council members and city staff, this is not just a city charter complaint concerning the mayor's action on a work session meeting on 9/10/18 at 5:30 PM, City Hall with Johnson Controls Incorporated, where we were looking at utility metering, not meetings, utility meterings. A quorum of the city council members consisting of myself, Mr. Mateh, Mr. Lopez, Mrs. Greco, was also present with city manager Greg Sun, city attorney Les Downs, and city clerk Audra Garrett, and some local residents. According to council member Mateh, he received a phone call from Mayor Bill Rico on Monday afternoon to chair the meeting. During the meeting, I realized that this may be going against the city charter. I did not say anything at that time because I wasn't sure how the charter was worded on this situation. The following day, I looked at the charter, section 4.7, pages 11 and 12. That section states, now listen to me really carefully, that section states, "If the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem are absent from the meeting, it is then up to the council to appoint a member to conduct the meeting." I find this to be a violation by the mayor, who does not know how the charter and follow it. Doesn't know the charter and doesn't follow it. I believe that all members, including some city staff, does not know the charter itself. Some city staff. If council members and the city staff could know the charter, then we wouldn't be in this type of situation. I do not blame Councilman Mateh for doing what he was told to do by the mayor. But again, Mr. Mateh, we have to know our charter. We are a city ruled by charter and not by a strong mayor such as Colorado Springs. I firmly believe that one day we're going to get in a lot of hot water by not following this charter. I believe Mr. Rico should be sanctioned because this isn't the first time this has happened with the mayor. And finally, I don't know for sure that this meeting with Johnson Control was a legal meeting or an illegal meeting. If this is illegal, we may have to have this meeting again. I know that no decisions were made, but I just want the public to be aware of this fact. So what I'm trying to tell you is, I don't have nothing against the mayor, but I do have a problem of not knowing this charter. When I got on this council, I don't know, 12, 13 years ago, I had one council member I served with, and he told me, "Joe, the first thing you do is learn your charter." And every meeting, every meeting that I attended, he said, "Joe, did you look at your charter?" Yeah, I did. And he'd ask me a question to make sure I knew my charter. And that's why I'm saying, we're going to get in hot water, guys, if we don't know our charter. I'm asking the council, I'm asking, you know, I had a meeting with Mr. Sun and Mr. Rico and myself in a private, private meeting over there in the city manager's office. It got a little tough. I'm not going to ignore it, you know, yeah, it got tough. And the reason it got tough, because I mentioned other things that happened with the army and nothing was done to it at that time. That was a serious situation, very serious.
Mr. Benado, would you please keep that on? Because that does...
Wait a minute, don't interrupt me. You can't interrupt. You can't interrupt me.
That is, I can. That's irrelevant to what this discussion is about.
All right, okay, I'll take it. Janet, can I continue off that? I won't say that about the army, yes. All right, then also, here we go again, with not knowing the charter, without knowing this charter. I'm not going to be responsible sitting on this council and getting one hell of a hot water for the state to come down and do something to it because we're having different things going on. And I think the public has the right to know this. I'm not crucifying the mayor, I'm just telling him, "Learn your charter. Learn your charters, learn your, whatever you have to do." But I don't feel like I'm very comfortable right now of sitting up here and talking about the charter and they don't know the charter. And that's all I have to say, you know, it's a point of view that I was very shocked, very shocked, that a couple of our main city workers, staff, did not know this until I brought it to their attention, and it bothered me. And that's all I'm going to have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'd like to respond. One of the things I want to say is that that provision there, I understand, is there. However, the thing about it is whenever we, any one of us council people here have an inkling that something is not correct in a meeting, it should be brought up immediately at the time, not two days later, not three days later. If you have an inkling, the charter is not under lock and key.
Go ahead, no continue.
It's not under lock and key. Whenever you have an idea that something is not right, all you have to do is say, "Let's bring out, let's pause this meeting temporarily, let's bring out the charter for review." It's as simple as that. The other item that I objecting to says where he says that I should be sanctioned. First of all, like I said, we went through recent issues that I was, I'm not sure if I've better term, acquitted of them, so that should have more relevance to this content. So at this point in time, Mr.?
I have.
Please, if I may, please.
Sure. We find all this staff, everyone who was at the meeting, find ourselves in an untenable situation.
I apologize.
No, that's fine. It's an untenable situation. There are mitigating considerations, I'm hoping to address those if any and present those at this time. First of all, when Mayor Rico called, and we've all read the charter, we probably read this part, it just was not that significant. It was, dare I say, inconsequential. And I'll come back to that in a little bit. But when the mayor called me on Monday morning, his specific request of me was, "I will not be there, Councilwoman, Miles will not be there, and would you, as the former mayor of Pro Tem, chair the meeting?" To which I agree. It seemed logical and it made sense, but I was aware, I had read the charter, I just didn't remember it, but neither did anybody else who was here that night. So the point I'm painfully trying to make is this, to your point here about the charter, it didn't come from Moses and it's not the third chapter. It was drafted by our city founders at the time that we went to the home rule and it was written by laypeople. And it's well-intentioned, it's purposeful, and it's directed. In my arena, I used to work in law enforcement and we had a policy manual, a policy rule and procedure. A policy was a general statement of purpose and intent. A rule with which there were few was an inflexible statement of expectation of behavior. And procedure basically told us how to do things. This, in my mind, based on my history in working in that structured environment, who chairs the meeting is a matter of procedure. It's not all that consequential. It's in the charter, given that for which the charter is worth. Now, we are contemplating millions of dollars of expenditures and it really doesn't matter who chaired the meeting to deal with $600 million worth of expenses. We can make, I can make the argument that motor vehicle law, Title 42, argues that it's illegal to do everything that it specifies. However, from my 30 years' experience, when I had someone in a DUI accident that resulted in death or injury, the charge was vehicular homicide or vehicular assault. It was also illegal for a person to not sign the affirmation of insurance on the back of the registration. Do you weigh those? You know, we are governed and we are thought, we as state troopers, or as I was then, and we as council members and as staff people are mandated to exercise good judgment. Judgment means a considered decision that comes to a sensible conclusion. Councilman Benado's point is well-made and well-taken. What we did was a distinct violation of the charter. The question is, how big a deal is it? Significant enough that Joe brings it to our attention, which you have done. We are all aware of it. The question I'm trying to make, or the point I'm trying to make, it was not a question of malice intent that we went that route, it was a question of oversight. All of us, including Joe, who was here, and staff, we just didn't remember. Had we remembered, we probably would have done other ways. And what I guess what I'm trying to say, I go back when, as I was thinking about this, when I was 10 years old, I remember we used to get in two weeks what the Catholic school got in a whole year. We had those blue nuns come up there and give us parochial Baltimore catechism. And there we were taught mortal sins and venial sins. I'm thinking, this one's a venial sin, people. You made your point, Joe, we know about it, we know how strong you feel about the charter. Maybe what we need to do is have study group. And we need to have, no, I'm serious. Maybe what we need to do is we need to study and we need to have little trivia questions, kind of like Jeopardy!, at every meeting about the charter. What does the charter say about this? And we pick our mind. It's a good filler between the work session and the regular meeting. It's a lighthearted way to end the meeting and at the same time, it's purposeful. But I think we've come to a good judgment to have a logical conclusion. Your point is made. Let's put it behind us.
Let's move on. Can I say something?
Let's get questioned, any other questions, with some of your councilmen. Problems?
I agree, I mean, it isn't a charter, it is something that we need to adhere to. I am a person who likes to stick to the rules. I didn't even think about it at the moment, I'm not going to lie, I'm just as guilty as anyone else who's up here of neglecting to be mindful of it at the moment, but I do see the point that Councilman Mateh is making is, you know, we didn't make any decisions in this meeting.
No.
It was just to learn about this Johnson Control potential agreement. You are very right, Mr. Benado, in the terms of the fact that it wasn't done correctly. We should have done something better. To your comment, Mr. Mayor, I don't think, though, that if something isn't said right at the moment, it's just a point at that point, though. I do think that it should be able to be revisited later, especially if it's something more substantial. I don't think that this is of the biggest issues that we have at the moment right now, but it is still substantial because it is a violation of the charter. And again, I'm just as guilty of it as well, and that's the point I want to make.
I don't have anything to add to what you said, Anthony. I thought you did an extremely good job of blanking these out and the moral and the media. On the other hand, I will say that when we drift away from the charter, we could someday have, you know, big problems. I wonder if I'd become complacent in trusting that other people are figuring that out, that we, whether it's city attorney or city clerk or whatever. Nobody bears responsibility for the city charter more than the city council members. So I like your idea of, you know, some sort of study group or pop quiz or something like that.
I don't mean to trivialize it.
No, no, I wasn't either. I'm saying I like your idea. I like your idea. We need to get back on our toes and I want to thank you for bringing this issue to our attention. That's all I have.
Can I say something now? I think what Mr. Mateh just said was kind of a slap in the face of the people that wrote this charter. He said it was written by laypeople. Laypeople! There's one of them sitting in here tonight that was on this charter, wrote this charter. And I agree with Carlos. I'm the type of guy that's going to follow the rules. If you don't want to follow the rules, I don't know what to tell you. I don't know what to tell you. I don't have my charter with me tonight, but this is our Bible. The charter is our city Bible. And I don't see any point of people going against this charter. I don't care who it is, whether it's the city manager or whoever it is, the charter is our voice. And if we don't stick with the charter, then I don't want no other part of it. Because I'm going to sit here and get the city of Trinidad in trouble because we went, like Mr. Mateh, to something little like this. This isn't little, this is a big deal. This is in the charter. Know your charter.
Mayor, may I please just walk in? I'm sorry. I have to win here. I was going to ask you to... There are two, without taking issue with you, Councilman, but all, there are two groups of people I need to vindicate. You on council and you as staff. There's only one person in this whole mix that has attorney in his or her title, and that's me. And so if it's a legal matter, if it deals with the charter, if it deals with reorganizes, it's my responsibility. And you are my client and first and foremost, the whole reason I sit here is to advise you. And so that was a miss on my part, for which I apologize. Secondly, there's a lot of discussion of staff and I think that is the case because expectations are so high for people like Audra and Greg and other people, but really they should not be, you know, they should not be indicted because of my, was my responsibility and was my mistake. So I apologize and it did seem like it was a lesser matter, however, it is in the charter. So I get it, point made, I apologize, and I think that will need to be an item of business for council, because you can't very well begin a meeting and say, "We're going to appoint," and that's what the charter says, "someone to preside over the meeting when the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem are not available," because you then need someone to call the meeting to order and to preside over the meeting while you're doing that to organize everybody to appoint someone. So there's some problems. And my first reaction when this came to my attention was, this may need to be the subject of clarification and even possibly a future charter amendment, not to undo it, not to get rid of it, but to have clarification so that you know who the third command is. But I just want to say, people have been very generous to me and have, you know, kind of let me off the hook and dumped, it's my fault, and I'm sorry that staff has been, you know, indicted, I'm sorry that I didn't tell you guys. So I'm the one, I'm the one that you should be mad at and I'm... Show you where I'm at. May I? Please. Again, speaking from my role of experience, in the absence of a commissioned officer or a supervisor, the senior most among the rank of trooper whomever was there took charge. So it logically made sense to me at the time when you suggested as former Mayor Pro Tem, it kind of like was a position of responsibility. But be that as it may, with all due right and consideration to those who drafted the charter, they are Carmen Sandoval, Brett Plant, Ted Frank Martinez, Clayton Marcus, George Haddad, Marie George, Glenn Davis, Herman Corley, Robert Arco, Lori Hoffman, Mark Ritz was the vice chairman and Pete Dinuka was the chairman of the committee, Robert Sandoval, Penny Rasimov, James Perry, Barry Marshall, Beatrice Klotzinski, James Gold, Loretta Day, James Costin, and David Barak. I did not mean to give you a slap in the face. I do respect your effort to write the charter. Thank you for your efforts, sir.
Anything else of discussion?
To me, one way to move forward from this is in the next meeting or the one after that, we just put a thing on the agenda for you to decide who the third one appointed would be and then make that just a general practice every time you go through the appointment of the Mayor Pro Tem, that you would name the third person, too.
That makes sense.
So then it would be... You said solve it by naming a third in line. It's unusual that two people are gone. It happens, so that's all, hold on, who the third person in line should be. Does that make sense?
I think even Greg asked, I think even Greg asked...
I wonder if this ever occurred before and I think she can't remember this ever happening.
It don't matter, it doesn't matter to me who chairs the meeting. I could care less who chairs the meeting. The problem is just what I talked about. And Mr. Sun, when Mr. Sun told me directly that he took it as a work session, I told Mr. Sun, "You show me anywhere in this charter that it says anything about..." that it says anything about a work session, and I'll buy you a steak dinner. Didn't I tell you that? It does, it just says a meeting. And when you have a quorum, when you have all you guys out there, that's a meeting. And if we're out there, that's a meeting. That's all it is.
Okay, let's go ahead and make a motion, do we wanna go forward with his allegation, or?
I don't know that it's worded in such a way that it requires any action.
That's a thing I don't need to know.
It's not an action, it was a, um, appoint me, and it's well done.
You couldn't, you couldn't file an ethical violation. I couldn't file an ethical violation because it wouldn't have went in, I'm speaking, you couldn't have went to, against the ethical code. That's why I didn't do it. Because last time I was shot down like, like snooping the Red Baron. But this time, that's why I didn't file the ethical violation, because they wouldn't have considered it anyway. And that's why I went to the, to the, to the city manager, and to the mayor. So think about it, Council, think about it, pretty hard.
Now let's go forward then.
All right.
Okay, item six, actually that's, what, seven? Seven A? Seven A, consideration, it's a public hearing. Considering the authority of organization of La Puerta Business Improvement District. Hearing is now open. Chair?
Good evening, Mayor, membership council, Terra Marshall Development Services Director, here to give testimony on behalf of the La Puerta Business Improvement District. Uh, in our previous meeting, we held the petition, we held the hearing for the, on September fourth, twenty eighteen, we held the hearing for the petition that was filed for the formation of the La Puerta Business Improvement District. We also did the first reading of an ordinance. It was approved with, and two amendments were suggested. I wanna call your attention to the two amendments that have been made to the ordinance for the second reading, and for your consideration of approval. One, council member Miles had suggested we add language to section five that previously had read, um, "on such power and authority imposed by the ordinance", and we've added the language, um, "such power and authority imposed by the ordinance and the operating plan as approved annually by the city council." The purpose of this was to formally say in the ordinance, uh, to commemorate what is in state statute, which is you will annually approve, um, operating plan and a budget for the, um, for the Business Improvement District. And only those actions that are in the operating plan and the budget may be done and carried through by the Business Improvement District. So the addition of that language was to further cement in the formation of the Business Improvement District Council's role as the overseer and the approver of the operating plan. The second amendment is the map was amended to exclude the Marty Feeds property, as discussed in the previous hearing. Do you have any questions for staff based on the ordinance, the changes, and what we're putting forward for approval?
I do not, thank you for asking.
No, you had a criminal investigation, sir.
Great, I believe Mr. Lamb, Ms. Chino are here, they gave testimony before, uh, regarding the La Puerta Business Improvement District. Okay, thank you.
Could you please come forward? Could you swear a living, please?
Good evening, I'm Tim Leonard, as you know, and my last name is Chino. And we're, as you know, we're asking that you, um, approve, um, the second reading and, and approve this district ultimately. So if you have any other questions, anything of us, I don't know what else we need to present. I think we've done that in the last couple of meetings.
Yeah, you did, good presentation last time you were here. Uh, does council have any further questions?
No, I don't, it's pretty clear.
I, I don't at this moment.
Just what's next?
What's next? Once we, uh, once we have the Business Improvement District up and running, um, we will continue with our construction plans, um...
What's the next milestone?
The, the next milestone would be, um, getting you, um, before October first, we'll get you a budget, um, uh, for your approval. Uh, the first budget is not really something that's gotten a lot of detail, because we're not gonna be collecting any, any funds, and therefore, um, we'll be giving you some expenses and things that we, that we anticipate. That's the next milestone.
Thank you.
And it's a, it's an ongoing project.
Yeah, I think.
So as those budgets change, we'll update those and we'll make that available.
So we are learning.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are, we're, we're back in school, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick, um, is it all gonna be retail spaces, or any office space, or something to that effect?
Um, it's sort of, it's mostly retail, but retail will be not just, um, food retail, it'll be, we're looking at, at different types of potential vendors. Could be sporting goods, could be clothing, could be, um, you know, there's a potential if somebody really wanted to come in with some sort of an office, we could do that, but right now, that's not in our plan.
Okay. Someone just asked me in the community, like, do they have an office space for an architect, or a lawyer, or accountant term, something like that?
More, more downtown for that, but La Puerta is more of a, a drive, get people off the interstate and into our community, and so that's primarily retail.
We really want something that will be complimentary to the hotel. That people have a option to eat, shop, whatever that might be. Um, and things that are complimentary to Trinidad, be it, um, a bike shop, say, so that when people come here and they can ride bikes to go somewhere, or, or, um, to float the river, or things of that nature, too. We don't know yet exactly, we have ongoing discussions with a number of people who are very interested in coming to Trinidad.
Yeah, in fact, we were here today with a group out of Denver, who's interested in Trinidad.
Yes. So we are continuing to promote Trinidad, um, not just the work, but Trinidad itself. We wanna see this town, um, be recognized by people in this state and other states for what it has done.
And I have one last comment. There, there's a woman who comes into our business, and she is just thrilled about maybe having an Arby's. I know that's all, but she just always tells me about Arby's all the time, so, please, sir, please. Bring in an Arby's, bring her out.
In the past, we have had discussions.
You can, but she just, she asks me all the time, is there an Arby's coming?
They expressed an interest in us, I know.
Yes, they did.
Okay, okay, that'll give something to make her happy, when I see her next to me.
Yeah.
We wanna be selec-, we wanna be selective, though.
Joe, do you have any questions?
I don't know, sir.
I don't. You know, the big question I have, that, uh, people are always wondering is, are you going to, considering having maybe, uh, a dining that would sit down?
Well, it's, the purple toe is opening in a week, hopefully.
But yes, we have considered some higher-end restaurants. Um, we do have some other properties on commercial buildings that may be a better location for that. Um, uh, but we removed Marty Feeds from our Business Approved District because, at request of city staff, because it's, we'd be part of the historic district instead, which is a better, uh, we understood why it might overlap. But as you know, Marty Feeds is, um, basically a food hall that we're anticipating with maybe up to twelve different, um, restaurants. Um, and so, uh, so, so i- if you've been to Denver and you've seen places like Avante or The Sores, they have these food halls where people can come in and, and it's just a big, open area. But we also have other properties that we have anticipated of higher-end restaurants.
That would, that would be...
Excuse me, I didn't mean to be a distraction, but Chuck, we didn't...
That was a feed store.
Yes, I understand.
What about, what about Sister Lamb, do you have a partner? Are you doing one now? I think that would be great, right there, just breathe up.
We are, it's still in the planning stage, um, but it is definitely going on as just an idea, and it's more than that.
I know, go down, you always see a lump of dirt sitting there, what's happening here?
So we're continuing on all of that.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Information.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming back and talking to me.
Yep.
You're gonna have to take up residence at some point. Anyone in the audience to speak for, or against the consideration of the Business Improvement District, or the La Puerta Business? No, they're disposed. Item seven I, could you please read the, uh, second reading, please?
An ordinance authorizing the organization of La Puerta Business Improvement District, designating the service area of the district as a location for new business or commercial development, establishing an appointed board of directors, and placing certain restrictions and limitations on the exercise of district power prior to approval of an operating plan and budget for the district.
Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Two seconds. You don't need, any other discussion? No other discussion, please call vote?
Benado?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Matei?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item seven B, change of ownership application filed by Trinidad Cultivation Services Incorporated, thirteen zero zero two, Conne Road, twenty-six point two. Hearing is now open. Could you please swear a living?
Sorry, I, I will not be sworn as a lawyer until I'm elected.
State your name, please.
Both of you? Sean Potts.
Sean Potts.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Council, my name is Adam Stapen, S.T.A.P.E.N. I'm attorney licensed, practice law in the state of Colorado, my registration number is two seven five zero six, appearing on behalf of Mr. Potts in furtherance of the change of ownership for this cultivation, uh, in Trinidad.
At this point, we turn it over to our attorneys to ask you questions.
Thank you, Mayor, thanks for having me, gentlemen.
Good evening.
So, Mr. Potts, I, I'm gonna be asking you a number of questions, sir, and if you would like it anytime, please defer to council, and you may talk to him. So, sir, this is a transfer of ownership application, correct?
Correct, yes.
And if approved, you're going to be a ninety percent owner in Trinidad cultivation, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and so, so council is clear, you own the property that we are talking about, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so, who is it that currently is leasing the property from?
Adam Prince.
Okay, and Mr. Prince, he has an existing cultivation facility at that location and at that address, correct? Is this a, uh, is this a zoning, of an industrial zoning at that location, if you know?
It is, yes.
Okay. Now, Mr. Potts, are you aware of all the conditions, all the conditional use permit conditions, all the existing license conditions that Mr. Prince is subject to with respect to this?
Yes, okay.
And how long have you owned that property, sir?
Um, just over three years.
Okay. Will you tell council, if you would, please, what is the status of the cultivation facility out there? We hear about cultivation facilities, don't always know, you know, what stage they're in, so, indoor, outdoor, grow, just if you would, please tell council a little bit about this.
I'm gonna recap a little bit of what we discussed earlier, a year ago, two years, years ago. We actually, um, went and bought the property, and we almost wanted an outside cultivation. Got a late start in the season, we put up hoop houses, threw in hoop houses to avoid the cold. We learned real quick that because of staffing restrictions in Trinidad, once you get the people, you're gonna keep them staffed, you don't want to release them. Um, it was better to do outdoor, which is the main function of the business. Right now, we have approximately fourteen hundred plants outdoors. And we've got some in veg, which are still outdoors, but those are programmed to go indoors. That way, our staff can go inside and raise them during winter, keep them employed. Really, the off-season is purely for employees. It's to keep those guys intact so that when the season wraps back around, they're not scattering, trying to find good people in a bad place once again. We're just not really available in Trinidad.
I'm sorry if you say, how many people do you employ?
Um, right now, we have eight on staff during harvest season through trim season, which is roughly October through February, we'll gear up to twenty, twenty-five people.
Okay. Now, Mr. Potts, if I could, is there, is there a contingency plan if for any reason this is not approved by council? I mean, I'm sorry, I just wanna ask, and I, I know you don't wanna talk about that, but if that happens, is there a contingency plan?
The only thing we could do is fall back to Adam Prince.
Okay. And I, I'm assuming Mr. Prince is wanting out of this operation?
Yes.
Okay. And I could have drawn an objection for relevance for that question, but, thank you, man. Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that, and so, I, I wanna ask you, Mr. Potts, and soon I'm going to be, um, turning this over to council to, to have them ask questions about you. But, um, I, I want to, and I, I think it's easier if I do this because I'm asking you questions, and before council does this, I, I wanna, you know, just ask you a few questions about your prior criminal history.
Okay.
And it's, it's going to come up, and, and I, I think it's, again, easier if I, if I talked about this initially. So, um, it's, it's fair to say, is it not? And you, first of all, you represented, you attempted to recall the, the criminal, the arrests and the encounters you have had legally as part of this application.
Correct. I understand.
You, you did like a summary of your, let's say, your arrest, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
And, and I think that was, that was, yeah, it's part of the package, of course, and it was quite accurate, and you did a summary of that. I wanna begin also by saying, you have been approved by the state of Colorado.
Correct.
Correct. So that application, they have found that you meet sufficient good moral character requirements, and they have approved you. And if you recall the date of that approval? It's okay if you don't, it's part of the package, you know, I can refer to that in just a moment. But, okay, so I, I again wanna go through this with you and have you, um, explain any one of these. I, I guess I wanna begin by saying, your, your criminal history goes through from two thousand and four until two thousand and thirteen. Does that sound about right?
It does, um, I had a DUI charge, as brought down the record since two thousand, I think, five or six, for not working at the garden division. And, you know, bulk of what I had on there is between two thousand ten, two thousand, I think, thirteen, two and a half to three-year time period. And if I might, embarrassing to talk about, even with the two thousand...
I know, and I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay, I'd rather address it because I'm sure, many people here, I've been in front of you many times, I deal with the city staff a lot as well. And I'm sure some of you saw this and you make a judgment of your life, a piece of paper. And I don't want that to happen, I'd better speak for myself than the paper speak for me. I'm gonna begin very simply. In two thousand seven, I owned one of the largest advertising companies in the country. In two thousand seven, also, the, uh, housing market crashed. Okay, Mary? I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry.
In two thousand seven, the housing market, market also crashed. The stock market crashed, the employment market crashed. Um, people all around us were losing their jobs, losing their houses. I had friends that moved back in with their parents, and some moved back in with siblings. It was a crazy time for everybody. I kind of made a decision, I'm not gonna let that happen to my staff, that we're gonna downsize facility, we're gonna kick up sales, and we're gonna take care of these people that built this company for us. Some people wanna say, great, some people wanna say, bad. Fast forward two years later, I had to fire him, why? I feel terrible, that was very guilt-stricken over it all. What about people on the street? A lot of people lost their homes because of our decisions, we had over a hundred employees at the time. In doing this, I put all my personal fortune into it as well. I lost investment property, I lost my homes, I lost just about everything at the same time during it. And when you think it can't get any worse, of course, like they say in their vows, through better and worse, as soon as the worst came, I did worse as well. I'm sorry, the country song, I know, sorry. And forgive me, I'm a little bit nervous, but this was a very embarrassing part of my, uh, fifty years. Instead of going to friends and family, it was shame, I failed in company, I let a lot of people down. I'm on a bench. I'm sorry, I'm... My new friends were the guys sitting next to me at the bar. I should've gone to my family and friends that helped me through this period. Um, felt like I was falling, grabbed a hold of relationships, got into a really bad relationship with a young lady, and I wish I got out the first week. Actually, I should've got the first day, but I wasn't a man like mine. This is something that will follow me forever. I had to explain it to the MED, they did a four-month investigation on it. Tonight, to you, I'd rather you know what I went through and what I did versus looking at a piece of paper. A piece of paper isn't due of facts. Um, on there, there is a bribery charge. On there, there is a bribery charge. I'm very embarrassed of that, I didn't provide anybody. What that piece of paper doesn't tell you is, my sister put a civil suit against the manager of the condo I was living in, I moved out because of it. I came back the next day to get my small belongings I left, he calls the police, says I'm out of the place. As you can see, they downgrade it to a trespassing charge right away, comes across the line. Doesn't tell you, I've got a charge on here for smuggling contraband to a jail.
It tells him. Well, no, it's on there, yeah, it's on there.
That's crazy as well, I told you I had a crazy relationship.
Explain that, would you please?
Yeah. Her way to get back at me was always try to get me dropped. I knew she, she'll call the police and then she'll drop it, she called the police and dropped it, that was just her way. In this particular case, she called the police, I get arrested, you'd think I would learn my lesson by now, but what it is, it is. And they have, well, before you go into hooking, they have an area, they've got a trash can there, the police officer, somebody tells you, you have anything, this is your free pass, you throw it out, we forget about it. I don't have it, I walk in, there's a joint in my front pocket. Smuggling contraband, it wasn't in my shoe, it wasn't weird, crazy, or anything, that's just, I forgot, taking it from someone, put it in my pocket, and that was it. I ended up taking a charge for that, and that's a felony charge, going in. I had to make a deal with the prosecutor to take a charge on the battery as well as that, otherwise, I would end up with a felony. He said, look, we'll make you a deal, you do a misdemeanor and a possession, and we'll let it go. Wow, so that's what I ended up doing. Listen, I take responsibility for all of it. It's not, it was my bad times, it was my bad decisions, come on, look at those bad decisions. It's nothing I'm proud of, but you know what, I pulled out of it. Got a good base, my family, my, turned my ways around, if you will. Best thing I can pull out of it is what I learned, and that is, man, when things are bad, you can't put your head in sand, you can't do what I did. And you've got to turn it back upside down, and I did that my entire life, you know, I didn't even get a parking ticket or anything else until that DUI, my first run-in at thirty-five years old. Then, I'm not saying that's a big thing as well, but I lasted thirty-five years before I got in trouble. So I think I'm being judged on a piece of paper or what I did in the past, look at my whole past, look at my high school career, my college career, my I got, you know, I raised two kids mainly on my own, I was given primary custody. You know, most of my vacation time right now, I go see family, and we're raising a niece and nephew, they're kind of children, which right now. That's the type of person I am, I went through a bad time, there's no excuses, and I take full responsibility for it. You've got the paper in front of you, I'll have to answer any questions the best that I can.
Thank you. And, Mr. Potts, I just have a few more questions of you, I, I want to clarify, because I, I went through your criminal history, and I counted eleven entries, and I, the memo I submitted to council, that is the second page of the memo, so you, you know, I tried to summarize those for you. But I want to clarify, you have no, no felony convictions, correct? Either five years or ten years.
No.
No felonies, but you do have a number of felony arrests?
I did, yes.
Okay, all those cases were resolved short of a felony conviction. Do you have any convictions for DUI? I know that the one in oh-four resulted in a plea to careless driving.
I had two.
Reckless, okay.
I had two others, and they were actually, I don't know how this works, they charged me a one count on both of them. So on my record, I have one DUI, which is crazy, I should have two.
Right.
I wasn't involved in the lawyer, in the negotiation, I really should have two, but I won't.
And there was another one, the last one we were arrested for?
That was the seventh, yeah.
Okay, it was, it was a felony, I mean, because of the prior numbers.
Because if it was three DUIs in Florida, it's all that felony.
Okay, I understand. And I, you know, one of them, and I understand you have said that there were a number of false accusations with the woman that you were with at the time, but one of them is an allegation of a domestic violence felony battery by strength of delusion.
That's the one I was actually arrested on in a conflict with.
Okay.
I wasn't even in the, the city at the time, but again, I had to make a deal with the prosecutor for them to break it down. But I'm happy to tell you the, sir, but I don't want to sound like, none of this is mine, it is.
I understand.
I'm up to it, they make excuses for it, and try to downgrade what it is.
Okay, so, Mr. Potts, I just want to ask you a few general questions before I turn it over to council, and that is, you understand, you're, if this is approved, your obligations going forward with the city of Trinidad, correct?
Yes, correct.
And, and your, you know, ongoing, the requirement that you cooperate with everyone on city staff, your accountability, your transparency with everything you do, the fees you have to pay, you understand all of that, correct?
Correct, yes.
And have there been any, any violations out there while it's been under William Prince's control?
No, not at all. I'm sure everyone's aware of how the dispensaries and the rules are attached here, and we have twice as many cameras in our particular facility than we're supposed to have. That's for our protection as well as, you know, the rules. We have, I mean, our security is, we've got nighttime security guard, we've got invisible fences around the place, and we're twenty-four hour watched.
You understand that in times of extreme water loss scarcity, you may be one of the first places to be cut off for water in the city of Trinidad. Okay, I, have you read the application, you've read your, your supplemental, and you represent that everything is truly correct in the best of your thoughts?
I did, yes.
Okay, I have no further questions of Mr. Potts.
Any questions from council?
I take them.
To this point, you have been the landlord?
Yes, sir.
Of an enterprise out there that was operated by William Prince at ninety percent and Robert Manna at ten percent?
No, sir, Robert Manna is just not my name.
Okay, so Prince owned the whole enchilada, and he was renting from you?
He owns the company, correct.
And now, you and Manna are joining together to be ninety-ten?
That's correct.
In a facility that you own?
That's correct. I've actually run the day-to-day operations in this facility for nearly two years now.
Okay, so that is and will continue to be a grow operation?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Is there going to be retail sale at any point?
No, sir. Because a lot is it? No.
Yeah, that's a good question. Okay, so the point being is your involvement and interface with the public is only with the customers that you sell to as a wholesale seller?
That's correct.
Okay. When did you get to Colorado from Florida?
Um, actually, through my father. My father came to Colorado, and I had ended up starting up a LED business, mainly doing government contracts and big management companies. My father's coming through Colorado, and he says, you have something really good about this business. And if you would have asked me five years ago if I would have been in the marijuana business, I would have, you know, looked on radar. And I studied it, and it was really, looked like a lucrative business. We were gonna buy dispensaries, so I came in contact with William Prince, we were gonna buy a dispensary in Colorado Springs. I've got an accounting background, so I came in and sat in the books room on it, and determined that retail wasn't for me, that wholesale, I'm watching these guys trying to buy, I was putting on the counter, and it was really expensive, and it was hard to come by. That's changed tremendously now, if you follow the market at all, but at that point in time, it was very lucrative. So I said, hey, the future of this, especially as states open up, and we're out, actually, a lot of take-two product from one state to another is very good. So it was a future move. Trinidad at the time was expanding, I came down and met with the city manager at the time, Gabe, and everything found place.
Okay, so you have a Colorado driver's license issued in October tenth of twenty fifteen, so you have at least a license for three years.
Yes, sir.
And you've been here before that, when you left Florida in twenty fifteen?
That's correct, I came back and forth for six, seven months.
Sorry to interrupt you, the last criminal entry is like twenty thirteen.
That's correct.
So between twenty thirteen and twenty eighteen, five years.
Yes, sir.
What's been going on?
That was my last, actually, court date, the two thousand twelve.
That's the final, that's the final entry?
Yes, sir. What's been going on? Obviously, I had a trial. I did, um, some, stopped drinking, you know, that was obviously a big factor, living in a ball, if you will. I'm a big Anthony Robbins fan, I drank his Kool-Aid, if you will, a little healthier eating, exercise, positive thinking, meditation. Don't let once again, hopefully, this is the right one, it's better and worse, you might be in my worst time, so I figured it can only get better from there. And again, the work a lot, and our stereotype, they're my niece and nephew, they're going through the worst for me right now, and they need positive role models, and I should try to be so.
Very good, thank you, and I appreciate your candor.
Yes, sir.
What is your, your daily duties at the cultivation?
Um, it varies, it's when I show up, from five-thirty to seven o'clock normally. I walk the entire field and check plants, our watering system comes on, and it's still dark out, so that's why I get here so early. I check to make sure there's no leaks or anything, so plant management, personnel management, inventory control, and compliance.
So has your, has, have your duties changed, like, from today up in, say, six months ago, when Mr. Prince was the owner of that facility or of the cultivation service?
I write a lot more checks. But, I mean, my day-to-day is pretty much still my day-to-day, I'm a little bit more involved in bookkeeping, we'll say. I've had to take some courses, metric courses, it's the tracking of seed to sell, to make sure that there's no loss of product or where it is. And remember, the metric system is all designed to keep everything in house. You know, we don't want product getting out to kids, or black marketing, and that such, so someone's got to manage that, and as a matter of fact, Adam was just telling me a case he had, where these guys are in court, because they've got two hundred plants with no tags on. I can't imagine, I got one plant with no tag on right now, and I'm doing a complete inventory of eighteen hundred plants to see what that plant tag might be. That's our day-to-day, it's making sure, and making sure everything, and that's the hardest part of it, we get, making sure everything's compliant, the staff is motivated, and they're doing their job. My, my duties has only changed in the fact that I've got to pay more attention now and get more classes to be more responsible for that metric system. MED's got to own a classwork, I'm sorry, I didn't know it was, you own a class. What I've had to do as well, is kind of upgrade my growing abilities, so I've had to take some different classes on how to grow, which is nothing to do with, I'm sure what your question was. I'm sorry if I ramble a little bit, I'm a little bit nervous.
Um, I understand, Mr. Robert Joseph, is it Manna or Manam?
Manna.
Manam, is gonna be a part of your owner structure, um, is, and this may be a question for council with us, is it still a mandate that everyone that is part of the business ownership structure have to be a Colorado resident, or has that changed through the MED? Does anyone believe he lives in Michigan?
He lives in Michigan, that's correct.
I believe it has changed through the.
It, it actually opened up two years ago.
Okay, I just, I don't keep up with the MED rules as much as we first did when we first encountered these. Um, that was, that was my only question.
This, there are a couple of William Prince properties here, and I'm trying to remember, is this the block that was purchased from the city?
It was, it was purchased from the city, but I.
As I remember, there is a clawback provision in there, if things don't ramp up, is that correct?
There was a provision that it had to be functional within the first three years.
Where, and, well, that's my question, where are we in those three years?
Well, we're definitely functional, but I think that you might be confusing us with the Freedom Road property as well. When he first came to Trinidad, he was involved in those greenhouses up there, and I understand that, and I don't know everything, but I know there's some problems.
No, I think she's right, there was that provision, but, but if they're operational, and if, are you already selling product?
Oh, yes, we've been, we've been selling for years.
And that was, you know, right after I came on board in twenty sixteen.
Okay, 'cause this has been just a completely troubled property, and, you know, we were told that we'd, we'd have five times the amount of organs, we'd have just our cultivation, and we've got, well, more than five, fifty times.
Absolutely.
And, and I just, trouble, I, I don't know, someone walks into, I apologize, but I have the responsibility to say things are true though.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
You really walked into a jail with a joint in your pocket?
I did, I, I didn't.
Really, that, I mean, I'm just wondering whether this thing is ever gonna get off.
I understand your concern, our holdup right now.
How do you go from owning a huge advertising agency to walking, I, I know you used to do it with milk?
It was, it was pure stupidity, and I didn't really realize it was there. But my head was there, I don't know why.
I drive across state lines, I, I scrubbed my car because a friend of mine might have dropped something in the car.
Right.
It's silly.
You were, I'm sorry, you were under arrest?
I was under arrest.
Okay, so who was?
But I had the option to take it out, but I just didn't, and it's kind of funny, 'cause I'm in the business, I don't smoke. And you have to put this on someone else, I took this from someone else, a minor, and said, you don't need that, I cut my pocket, I didn't think nothing of it, so an officer said, do you have anything? No, I, you know, I got my wallet, my keys.
Wait, you confiscated it from a minor, because you were doing a good deed, but you forgot that it was that?
I sure did, I know that sounds crazy, so, that's why I didn't even mention it, so I didn't.
It sounds like you're not being truthful.
I understand, that's why I didn't say it in the first place.
You confiscated it from a minor, doing a good deed, and then.
That minor, that minor was my, that minor was my son.
All four reasons to remember what we said.
Well, you would think so, but I was so taken, I was arrested, so I was so taken by the arrest.
I just, I just have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
I've been sitting on this council a pretty long time now, and I dealt with Mr. Prince since day one.
That's right.
Day one, and in my opinion, Mr. Prince was, this is my opinion, with a finger in my side, because he promised this council, or not this council, the council before, so many things, so many things that he was gonna bring here and stuff like this. We're gonna have all these jobs, we're gonna have, do all this money, and do all this, well, one year goes by, two years goes by, I don't see Mr. Prince. So now you're standing there in front of us, and you want to take over this grow or whatever you call it, and I, I really don't understand your, your reasoning with it. You know, what I experienced going through with Mr. Prince, and like I say, this is my own personal opinion, yeah, you know, it's pretty tough, and I have a handle, and I don't know, Michelle was with me at that time.
Oh, absolutely, it's frustrating.
And it drove, we, actually, it drove us crazy, and that's why we're trying to get a point across to you. You seem like a gentleman that's really sincere, and, and, and comes to me pretty, pretty open, but the point of this is this, I, I, we don't want to hear a lot of promises, we just want to see action. And, and if that's the way it's gonna be, you know, we want to see things going, and we don't want us to see, yeah, we're gonna do this next month. Down the creek we go, or down, but that's all I have to say. So if you could answer me?
Absolutely, our crop this year is much, much better than last year. We need our facilities up, for sure, and in the very beginning of the meeting, we asked for an extension on the CFP plant plan. Reason being is the city needs attorneys for four months for a developer to be like crazy. I needed this building up two months ago, so when the harvest comes in, I have somewhere to harvest. It's gonna be a challenge for harvest, but we're gonna manage it, we're gonna do it in stages. The buildings will go up within the next, I'd say, six months, very late, so as soon as your guys' attorneys approve this, we're gonna put up additional hoop houses, which, which generate additional revenue for us, and the main building that we can actually operate out of. So we're moving forward with it, it's just that we've been, we've been hindered to this point.
Uh, so, what I want to know is that, if there's any other changes being made, then it have to, do you have your diagrams and stuff?
You've already proved.
That has to go through planning and training again?
You've already proved, you've already proved everything that we want to do.
That was all approved by that, only end this council?
Yeah, the only thing we're waiting on is the developer's agreement to get through.
Tara Marshall, Development Services Director. So, a section of our code related to subdivision requires that the city, prior to recording the plat, the final plat for subdivision, executes a development agreement with the developer. We're closing in on a final agreement, you provided the extension during the consent agenda that allows us to do that. So, uh, the deadline, the final drop dead deadline is February, but I anticipate we'll actually have this done in October, November.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manna.
The one question I have is, you know, you, you own the property?
Yes, sir.
Right now, subleasing that to Mr. Prince, correct? You mentioned that, of course, retail is a lot of the question for you at this point.
Yes, sir.
Do you have, and I don't remember, it might be in the information, might, might actually, do you own other properties elsewhere that you'd have cultivation?
No, most of them.
So this is the one and only?
Yes, sir.
That was my question, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sure, I'd like to, just maybe make a little closing if you want, or something, if you want to entertain anyone else's inquiry or opinions, or should I? I'll leave it to you, last time, you want to?
No, if you would like to.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, no, sure, yeah, again, I understand, again, I'm Mr. Stapen, I'm an attorney, and I'm here representing Mr. Potts. Obviously, he considers this to be a big deal, I wouldn't be here. He understands on paper, it may look like what has gone on during that period of your life, but if you look at a forty-nine-year period of life, and really, we're talking about a two-and-a-half-year period of time, when you're down, you're down, and I think that proves the point of where he was sliding. when you're down, you're down, and I think that proves the point of where he was sliding. He didn't do that before. He hasn't done it since, as you've mentioned. It's been five years, if not more, of nothing. And I understand your inquiry. I'd be the same way if I sat in your position to make sure you understand exactly what the past looked like, what the past to that looked like, and what the future looks like in the present, because you're judging him as a present mode based on his prior actions. And the prior actions, if you look at it, three-year period of time and a forty-nine-year period of life, is that how we judge a person? Especially when it occurred five, six years, seven years ago, eight years ago? Or we judge that person more of what he or she's been doing now? And I think that's what we're here before you, asking you to look at that. In fact, the law does require that, right? The law says, even though we may have had problems in the past, no one's perfect, you're obligated to see the record as a whole and see what he's done since then, as you mentioned, the rehabilitation, and what's happened after the fact. And what's happened after the fact is he's been in Colorado here without a speaking ticket, no issues with the folks, with you, the police here, no issues with the med, he's stopped drinking, you know, all the reasons you would see. Why would, why would anybody walk in with a detention center with a marijuana joint in their pocket, being an adult, that's forty odd years old, without even having any prior drug history? It doesn't make, I'm just, just putting it in context, it's, if you look at that period of time, it was a period of time that he's ashamed of and taking responsibility for. As it relates to Mr. Prince, I don't know this gentleman, and I'm glad I don't, what it sounds like. But I can't speak to any of that stuff, so I just, you know, thank you for your time. We're here to answer any further inquiry you may have, or really what we're looking at is judging this person as he sits today, and I think you've seen that. So, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think my concern right now. I understand the faith in redemption and all of that stuff. I'm actually, just because somebody spoke, at one point, you said that the police came and there's an assault, domestic violence involving strenuous relations, and you said that you weren't even in town. But you had to plead down. Well, why isn't it dismissed? Here's where I'm going, okay? You walk into a, that doesn't sound.
I could have gotten the.
It's not logical, right? Let me finish what I'm saying. All right, what I'm concerned about is whether you're lying to us right now. Nobody walks into detention center, especially when you're given, you confiscated it from your son. Okay, now it's in your pocket and they're saying you've got one last chance. You knew it was there. I think you might have been smuggling it in. I'm wondering whether you're lying to us right now. So that's my concern. We've had a history of misrepresentations with this facility. And I'm wondering whether you're lying to us, and that is a serious.
I understand.
If I'm smuggling it in, it's, this all seems a little bit pious, okay?
Counselman Michelle, I mean, Counselman Michelle, I wouldn't smuggle it in my pocket if I was really going to smuggle it in. I know they're going to turn out my pockets, so that would be kind of crazy for me to do. It was definitely a lapse of judgment. I should have remembered it was there. I was caught up in the moment, I'd be arrested. I wasn't thinking about anything in my pockets. I usually don't have anything in my pocket, so it was truly, and I understand what you're saying. It's, sounds crazy, who walks in with his inner front pocket?
Were you under the influence of alcohol when you were arrested?
I was not. At that, at that point in time, I was not. It was simply stupidity, I hate to say that, but that's what it was. I normally don't have anything in my pockets. I didn't expect anything in my pockets. I forgot I had taken it. I was caught up in the moment. You get arrested, you get handcuffed, and I had just gotten back in town, actually. I was gone for a week. And they were waiting outside my house, got arrested, going in, they gave me the chance. There's no reason for me not to throw it in the trash can. But again, if I would have my shoe or somewhere very personal, I could understand that, but not in my front pocket. And again, this has already been investigated. The state got all the files from the case departments and looked to make sure what I said was true. They vetted me for four months. They called, I gave them references, you guys have my references. I gave them references. They called my references and then asked them one question. The only question they had was, who else do you know? Who else do you know that knows shot? And then they called those people, because I was getting calls from people that I hadn't talked to in years. And I'd go, hey, I heard you're in Colorado. How'd you hear that? I got a call from an investigator asking questions about you. So good investigation tactics, I guess, but I haven't. That's so silly.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience to speak?
I think this is very difficult.
I, no, I just want to, you know, I'm sitting here listening to Mr. Potts, and I have the same concerns that Michelle has because I don't think there's one individual in this room that hasn't gone through some kind of horrific stage of life. And I'm in a profession that I see a lot of M E Rs.
I'm sorry, M E Rs.
Motor vehicle records, okay. And yours is highly unusual. A lot of activity, and that concerns me. And I'm looking at your narrative of when you made your reasons why those citations were issued. You're always putting the blame on somebody else. It's never your fault.
Not at all. I take responsibility for all.
And it seems like it's a pattern with you, Mr. Potts, and that is a concern.
City Councilman, excuse me, I take responsibility for all. My DUIs, oh, my DUIs. You asked me, was I drinking, driving? Yes, I was. I took full responsibility for it. I went to court for it. They downgraded me to one, so I didn't do it. I would have taken, like I said in the beginning, I just were both of them. I'm not sure why they gave me one instead of two. There's nothing, that's why I didn't even mention, you know, taking it from someone. It's my fault. I had it. I don't want to be in any of this stuff. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you both.
Is there anyone in the audience to speak for this change ownership application? Anyone to speak against this change of application? There is no, is counsel want to go into executive session on this? Make a motion, please. I make motion that we go into executive session for discussing the publication.
My second.
Oh, hold on, that please.
Benado?
Absolutely, yes.
Rango?
Yes.
Obeth?
No.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
So in the executive session, of course, judicial deliberation, let's go, to retreat back into change, please.